As a result of my conflict, I will leave the meeting room while the matter is considered and voted on.
Thank you very much, councillor Fekner. Are there any other? Any conflicts of interest? Okay. Just so you know that the live stream is having some technical issues, but we'll just continue on with the meeting. And you'll let us know when it's back? Thank you. Also that there was a, I think, deputy mayor, you had a... Just noting deputy mayor that you had a, you did declare a potential, I guess, a declarable conflict of interest? And in the governance and transparency committee regarding, um...
End of life.
Care of end of life?
Hospice?
Yes.
My apologies, this is a new procedure, the new laws just came into being last week.
Um, I did have a discussion with council officers this morning and, um, it was discussed whether or not this needed to be raised again, it's already noted.
It doesn't need to be raised again if you've been resolved, it's been resolved that you may remain in the meeting.
Yes.
You may wish to as a voluntary matter, but it would only be, need to be raised if you were determining the matter, for example, from those... Where you left the meeting.
Thank you. Yes, I spoke with the manager of executive services this morning just to make sure that we noted.
Yes.
He asked me to make sure we note them. Are there any other... What we're seeing, what we'd like to declare? Thank you. Then we'll move on to the next item, which is the confirmation of minutes. May I please have someone move those minutes, please? So, thank you councillor Milligan. And seconded, yes, thank you ma'am, deputy mayor. I'll now leave the matter open for discussion. Are there any amendments, corrections, omissions? No? I'll then put those minutes to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Might pardon me? Thank you. Move on to item 12, which is the mayoral minute. There is no mayoral minute at this meeting. So we'll move on to item 13, which is business outstanding. Matters lying on the table to be dealt with, there are none. So we'll move on to item 14, which is reception and consideration of committee reports. Noting that the growth and infrastructure waste committee has dedicated power, so this report just needs to be noted, there is no decision making to be made on that. There's a recommendation that the growth infrastructure waste committee report number 202003 of the 8th of October 2020 be noted. May I have a mover, please? The councillor Kunsman and a second to councillor Ireland. Thank you very much. I'll now open that for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put that matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous. We'll now move on to item 14.2, the governance and transparency committee. And the recommendations that the council adopt the recommendations of the governance and transparency committee report 202003 of 15th of October 2020. And I'll hand over to the chair of that to see if there were any batching or exceptions.
Uh, thank you, mayor. I've received no indication that there are any matters from last week's governance and transparency committee that councillors would like to discuss further this week. So my recommendation would be that they're all accept, accepted and, um, resolved. Um, I would just highlight that I felt one of the good pieces of business last week was item four, the lease to playgroup Queensland at Caralee. Councillor Kunsman requested that a non-exclusive arrangement be investigated. And I think it's a pretty important thing to consider because when you have a community facility and it's not being used 24/7, what options and opportunities are there for other groups to use it at other times? And I, um, I commend councillor Kunsman on that motion and, um, I think it was a very good outcome and I'm happy to recommend that and the other recommendations from the committee this morning.
Thank you. Well, I have it then, councillor, you are moving for all of those to be through. Do I have a seconder for that? Councillor Kunsman? Very much. I'll now open up those items for any, for the discussion on those items. There being none, I'll then put that recommendation forward. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. We now move on to 14.3, which is the, um, recommendation that council adopt the recommendations of the community, culture, arts and sports committee report 202003 of the 15th of October 2020. With the exception of certain items, I guess I'll leave that open. I'll hand that over to the chair now, councillor Fekner. Would you like to?
Thank you.
Go through the highlights if there were, if you'd like to.
Thank you, mayor. That sounds great. So I would like to move that we accept the recommendations of last week's committee in batch. There were just two reports, um, a couple of highlights from the committee last week. Um, one of the most exciting ones that we got to discuss, um, and learn about was that, um, by the end of the first quarter, council had distributed the better part of a half a million dollars to around 150 Ipswich community groups, sporting organisations and small businesses, um, in community donations, which is, which is a huge effort. That's almost, uh, more than the entire, than the entirety of the last financial year, uh, prior to that. So that's a wonderful achievement and noting that there are only two people in that department processing those applications from those groups. I think that we need to commend the council officers on their continued hard work to make sure that we're distributing money into, you know, our local businesses and, and community groups so that they're reaping the benefits. That's the whole reason we have, um, community donations, um, and we're seeing some wonderful outcomes of that. Um, secondly, we discussed, um, the COVID impacts on the arts in Ipswich. Um, there was, um, some discussion around what potentially we could be doing better identifying opportunities for the arts. Um, but ultimately, a lot of that conversation will be left for the creators of Ipswich Summit, um, which we implored, um, everyone to, to focus on, to direct their questions towards, uh, so that we can have a clear vision citywide moving forward on that. So, um, noting those highlights, I would just like to move that we accept the recommendations of the committee.
Thank you councillor Fekner. And letting you know that we're back on to live stream as well. May I ask someone to second that recommendation, councillor Kunsman?
Mayor, before we go any further, I'm, I'm taking a bit of poetic license, but, um, talking about community at the local government conference, uh, on the last three days. Um, they were talking about an Australian, um, national body that look after closing that. And, um, I'd like permission to try and, um, follow up on that and get more information on it, um, to help with our Indigenous accord.
Thank you councillor, um, I'll end that with a discussion period anyway, so it's quite...
I thought I'd better tie it in, community funding.
This morning I received actually an invitation, um, from the National Indigenous, through Indigenous group, extending some, uh, from the federal government. Um, asked wanting for us to sit down with our accord that we approved earlier this year and see what we can do to work together. And in particular, we want to work together with the Indigenous soldiers, Aman and sailors, um, war memorial as well. I think it's quite timely that you raised this.
Through the chair, I would just like to add the comment, thank you councillor Ireland for raising that, it's a great point. And, and we're all on the same, um, page with regard to the accord being a lot more than an aspirational piece or, or big bold statements. We want to have some clear outcomes, some deliverables, um, to make a difference. So thank you.
Thank you. And if I could add to the discussion too, the points that councillor Fekner made. I know that when we started that, um, under, under the general manager, Mr Poll, there was a change in the, in the grants office there to be a bit of a restructuring and a focus. Um, they're now spending more time assisting community in how to fill out those grant applications. So if you've never done one before, please feel free to ring the grants office in council, um, and they'll support you and help you through doing those grant applications. Councillor Kunsman?
That ability to actually speak to someone who will recommend that the appropriate fund is invaluable to the community.
Yep. Thank you. Any other discussion or comment? Let councillor put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please.
Just to you, mayor. Um, do we have a seconder on that one?
Yeah.
Did councillor Kunsman seconded it? Uh, yes, it wasn't up there. Thank you. So I'll, I'll do the vote again. So I did look away. I'll call for a vote on that recommendation, those in favour. Thank you, it was unanimous. I now move on to item 4.4 from the economic and industry development committee. I do know that there's, I think there's some amendments to be put forward, but, um, the recommendation there is that council adopt the recommendations of the economic and industry development committee report number 202003 of the 15th of October. CEO, we're going to do the best time. Did you wish to put forward these recommendations?
My understanding, the chair will talk to it.
Wonderful, okay. Uh, so chair, would you like to move that report?
Yes, I just moved that we accept the recommendations from the committee.
Yes.
Last week.
Thank you. May I have a seconder? So councillor Fekner, thank you. I'll leave it open for discussion.
So I, um, would like to state for the record that a typographical error in report one of the economic and industry development committee titled Ipswich exceptional experiences tourism development programme will be amended on the published records following this ordinary council session. The amendment will correct the title for graph one of the report from Ipswich total visitor arrivals 2015 to 2020 to Ipswich total visitor arrivals 2014 to 2019. The amendment will also correct the related source for graph one of the report from Tourism Research Australia National and International Visitor Data, June 2020 to Tourism Research Australia National and International Visitor Data to December 2019. The data shown in graph one of the report is correct as Ipswich total visitor arrivals from 2014 to 2019.
Thank you. Councillor Johnic, are there any highlights from that committee that you'd like to bring forward this ordinary council meeting?
Uh, just highlighting the exceptional, um, experiences development programme. I think this is just a teaser, um, and I think it has great potential, um, for some of our industry that had really felt the pinch during COVID. So, um, it may just be that, uh, inspiration that they need to spark some fresh ideas again. And I'm, I'm grateful that our, our council is behind our industry in this regard.
And I also note too, um, that there was a, a motion there to prepare an options report and establish of the Ipswich central precinct plan.
Yes, so, uh, it very much needed as well from councillor Doyle. It's, um, it will set the tone for the precinct and, um, make the CBD, um, known, I guess, as a cluster. So I think that's, um, definitely needed timely.
Through the chair, um, I, um, this is a really important, sorry, mayor, are we in discussion?
Yes, we are in discussion.
We are in discussion, good. Yeah, look, this is, um, a, a really important piece of work and, um, I guess long overdue within our CBD, the Ipswich Central, to work out, um, a, a plan and, and strategies going forward to support, uh, local businesses and, and attract, uh, new business. Uh, I look forward to working, uh, with general manager Ben Poll in developing, um, a comprehensive roadmap to improving Ipswich Central. And, and again, I don't want it to be just a mere aspirational piece. I, you know, really want to do some detailed work to have, uh, some outcomes, some deliverables there, um, that we can track um, and, and, and show Ipswich, um, what we've done to attract new business.
Uh, just through you, um, mayor, I, when I did see your motion, I was just like, yes, councillor Doyle's hit the nail on the head with this, so thank you.
Great to see our chairs working so collaboratively as well. Thank you. Are there any other discussion points? Okay, so I'll put that recommendation, or recommendation, uh, 14.4 to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, thank you. We now move on to 14.5, which is the report from the environment and sustainability committee. And the recommendation is that the council adopt the recommendations of the environment and sustainability committee report 202003 of the 15th of October. With the, um, and I'll hand over now to the, the chair to see if there's any highlights or reports that you'd like to provide, councillor Milligan.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I have, uh, not received any, uh, correspondence from other committee members, uh, wishing to, to raise, uh, any matters, uh, on the three items that were on the agenda. Those were specifically to cover a proposal to acquire property at, uh, Woolshed. Uh, there was, um, uh, just a slight alteration moved by yourself, uh, within the recommendation to correct addressing. And the other two were with regards to, uh, subprograms for, uh, capital works, the first being, um, storm quarter, the stormwater quality offsets, uh, which would, uh, come up in, in further committees, uh, more work to do with respect to the functionality of, um, the, uh, the assets that council has. Uh, and the other was, uh, again, another, um, priority list of, uh, subproject for land rehabilitation. I believe also in that one, there was a correction to data in, in the report where a table was laid out as the old divisional listing.
I'll get, I'll get you to raise that in discussion if I could, councillor Milligan. So I'll take it that you've moved this report?
Yes, and that all three, uh, be batched.
Okay. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you, deputy mayor. They'll open it up for discussion. Did you wish to put forward an amendment or correction, councillor Milligan?
Uh, that, that was handled at, uh, at committee and so I believe that was undertaken and I do apologize for, uh, extending the recommendation, sorry.
But I'd like to make it, we're now open for discussion on these points. There being no discussion, I'll then put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, unanimous. We now move on to item 14.6, which is the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee. Now, do we have some people leaving? Councillor Fekner, councillor Madsen. Noting it's, um, 9:29, councillor Madsen, have, have left the room. Uh, 14.6 is on the, uh, that council adopt the recommendation of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee report, uh, 202005 of the 15th of October 2020. Would the chair of that like to move it and point out the highlights?
Uh, yes, thank you, mayor. After comprehensive discussion at, at last week's, uh, committee, and I know it's always exciting to get an update via the report of what's happening, um, within our, our redevelopment in Nicholas Street precinct, um, and I have not received any further discussion points or issues raised by committee members or fellow councillors. So, uh, I move that we accept the recommendations from the committee in, in batch last week, noting there were three items. Um, one was the Nicholas Street precinct executive report, second being the retail sub, uh, project steering committee report. And then finally, the, uh, draft community safety strategy, uh, I move that we, um, that we accept the recommendations in batch. I, I just would like to note the highlight from the agenda for me was the, uh, draft community safety strategy.
Wonderful, thank you. May I have a seconder, councillor Milligan? Thank you. I'll now open it up for discussion. May I just query just for clarity with the, the safety plan, what's the, what's the, uh, plan going forward, I guess, with that, the safety strategy?
Okay, so there were a number of recommendations and, um, remembering that this piece of work is being, um, led by, uh, Larry Waite, um, our very experienced, uh, council officer in this area. So, um, he's drafted in consultation with other council officers, a, a, a community safety strategy, um, setting out a framework action plan, um, including, um, community consultation. Um, and, uh, as part of that, re-establishing the safe city steering committee. So the framework for that one, um, is yet to be finalised, but there will be an opportunity for two to three councillors, um, to participate in that steering committee and, and provide the valuable input and feedback from the community.
Wonderful. Thank you, deputy.
And can I just note that, um, you know, it's, it's timely, an important piece of work to occur as we, um, develop the Ipswich Central precinct plan, security and safety, um, is critical.
Thank you very much. Is there any for the discussion on that item? Okay, so I will put 14.6 to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I note that it's unanimous. And I'll now call for councillor Madsen and Fekner to, to come back. And we'll wait until they're back in the room before we go on to the next item. That was quick. Councillor, it's a bit... Thank you. I note that councillor Fekner and councillor Madsen are back in the room. So we'll move on to item 15, which is 15.1, the monthly finance performance report, um, September. May I have the relevant CFO to come down for, for questions before we do a, a move in second? Note that the timing of the month, we can't always have this discussion at the governance and transparency committee because of the, the timing in the, that time of the month.
Yes, that's correct. Good morning, Mayor Harding, councillors. My name's Jeff Keach, the chief financial officer. Correct, Mayor Harding, the difficulty with timing is by the time we process it, um, and do the analysis to get the report prepared for governance to transparency committee is, is, uh, difficult. So we bring it straight to council, uh, with the permission of, of the CEO and yourself. Um, if you, like, I'd just like to sort of outline a, a couple of key points again, as normal, um, the normal report to the, to the end of September. Um, overall, we continue to be in front of budget in terms of both what we refer to as overall net result, noting that that obviously includes some significant capital revenues, uh, donated assets and developer contributions. And our operating position is again approximately a $2 million deficit versus a current budget of $6 million deficit. Again, outlining there's probably a couple of key major reasons for that, for, for councillors and the mayor to note. Um, as outlined in the report, our fees and charges revenue is significantly in front of budget, uh, specifically in relation to our town planning fees, uh, which is about $2 million front. Councillors, recall through the budget process that we, um, anticipated a potential impact of COVID on our, on our town planning fees. And as noted in the report, we've actually phased that impact over the first six months. So one of the variances you're seeing there is because we phased that anticipating that that might occur in the first six months of the year and then return to more normal position in the, in the later six months. What we've seen to date, the first three months of town planning fees is actually very similar to this time last year. Um, so it's very hard for us to know whether that impact will occur in future years. It's just probably for noting that that variance may or may not continue depending on what the impact is of COVID on, on relation to those applications. But one of the reasons you're seeing that variance is that we did phase, um, that potential impact over that first six months for, for council to note. And we'll obviously continue to monitor that with the planning and regulatory services department as we move forward. The other area just for noting is that, um, the operational grants is a little bit in front. Uh, we've received $610,000 through the home assist COVID response. That's obviously will be offset during expenses. Um, some of that's been spent already and we'll pick that up in a budget amendment for council. So we'll, we'll increase the, uh, the budget for that and the expenditure for that in, as, as we move forward. The other carry impacting the, the variances will be materials and services. You'll note in the report that we, um, haven't spent that. We're about $2 million favourable year to date. Again, as I've mentioned, that's not abnormal at this time of year, but again, it's a watching brief for us. Um, there's a couple of programs, like our, our fire, uh, program couldn't be occurred at the moment because of the dry weather and will only occur sort of from April onwards then. And obviously, um, some of the, the mowing rosters, et cetera, because again of the weather. Again, we'll take a watching brief depending on the, you know, if, if that comes through with, with greater weather, that might change fairly quickly over the, over the summer period. Um, and then also just noting the, um, capital expenditures. So from a capital side, we're about $2.5 million behind budget. Um, that occurred in the month of September. Uh, we're working with the IED department, just looking at that program. There's a graph in there which councillor Johnic referred to last, last month. Um, if you look at it clearly against a quarter, we're behind. Uh, it's forecast to be on target by year end, but there are significant expenditures that'll need to occur over the next nine months of the year to, to hit that target. So again, we're working with the IED just to monitor that program in that space. From a, from a, just a noting, and I've, I've mentioned this before to, to council, um, just noting the employee expenses whilst we're, um, on below budget at the moment. It's, you would have noted it's starting to close up that gap of being behind budget, which is what we've spoken about and forecast in previous months. Again, we're starting, we're needing to recruit up to maintain our service delivery, but as you're aware, the budget has a 5% vacancy rate in there. So we're starting to hit up against that 5% vacancy ceiling in the budget and something that we'll need to consider as we move forward through the rest of the year. Um, we do weekly reporting to the workforce review committee and the GMs just in terms of our labour expenditure. So again, just noting, and again, a lot of it changes with phasing depending on when holidays is taken. So we'd expect the staff to take holidays over the Christmas period, that that might start to, to come back in a more favorable position as we go through. Um, that's probably the key, my, key points to raise. Um, happy to take any questions from yourself, Mayor Harding, all the councillors.
CFO, page 81 of 89.
Yep.
Of the...
Capital graph?
Chart there.
Yes.
Capital program.
Yes.
Um, appreciate that, that things come and go in the, in the, um, in the budget, but, um, what is concerned me, I guess, is our park, sport and environment asset rehabilitation is well below the projected spend. I think with COVID, you know, we want to make sure our, our parks and our sporting venues are in top condition. What's the, the, are there any issues or concerns there?
Um, I think as that graph highlights, it's, it's got a line in there for what would be a straight 25%. And as you're aware, the, the delivery program depending on design and construction timeframes. Um, I don't have the specifics on that. There are a number of key larger projects in there that the IED department will need to be working through. Um, happy for us to go away and bring a report specifically in relation back to either this committee or to growth and, um, infrastructure as appropriate. Noting that we do a more detailed capital expenditure there. We're happy to bring that forward and outline that. I guess the concern would be that if you look at the level of expenditure in total, noting that there is a significant spend rate needs to increase over the next period of time. So the IED department is looking at that scheduled delivery, both from a design perspective, procurement and construction timeframes to make sure that they can deliver that within that space. Um, at the moment, as you can see, there is going to need to be a significant ramp up. And that's something which we have raised and spoken with the IED department over the last two weeks with. And I know they've got a meeting on Friday again to continue working through that schedule, that space.
And CFO, what are you doing to, I guess, prepare the organisation for, for COVID? I know that we've been living with this since, since February.
Yes.
Um, but what are the impacts to the organisation?
Um, I guess the, the main one for a moment is, is the relief that councillors provided, both in terms of, you mentioned before, some of the, the grants and contributions to the community groups. That's been one of the key responses. And those programs are continuing. Um, we continue to have offered the fee relief for the first quarter. Um, and that includes extending the discount dates for rates and, and we're monitoring that continually with the public to make sure that if they are under pressure in terms of making payments as a result of COVID, please talk with our rates recovery team so that we can work through repayment schedules and look at things like the discount and interest associated with that, which was approved by council in June. Um, and we continue to make those payments on a seven day basis to support our local businesses. So we're continuing our seven day payment terms, which is also being well received in that space. So, um, it's a really watching brief. We haven't seen, um, the drop offs of revenue potentially that we saw at this stage. But again, as flagged, it's very hard to know whether that is reflecting of the fact that this federal government stimulus supported the business, the development industry and the, and housing. Will that stay in place now? Will it continue over the next six months? It's very hard. We continue to talk with planning and regulatory services, but it's, we're not able to easily forecast that. So very much continuing to watch, um, what we had seen and anticipated in our budget. And if the changes, we'll certainly bring that back for further conversation, say at the six month amendment.
Okay.
As we go forward.
And CFO, do you talk to other CFOs, other councils about what's, what's happening? I guess, do you, are there, are the policy settings, um, um, accurate for, for our residents and business and, and community groups here in Ipswich?
Yeah, what we do seems to be fairly consistent with what other local governments has done. Um, I haven't spoken to them directly, what impacts they've seen, whether they have had those compared to ours. Um, that's something that I'm more than happy to, to do. Certainly, for example, we receive, um, tax from QUU and we anticipate that to be low. You'll note that I've made a comment, we're actually in front of tax on QUU, so they've probably also not seen that first impact in the first period. But happy to follow up with both themselves and other councils to see if there is, um, seeing any consistent impacts to what we, we've seen. But yeah, it's, it's also trying to, um, forecast, and I don't think anybody can easily forecast what the impacts might be as job seeker and job keeper might change over the next six months.
I guess CFO would introduce, still need to do scenario planning.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we, we need to, as we go through the, the budget amendment processes, just try to anticipate what might be the case and to outline to yourselves what those impacts would be if some of the trends continue one way or the other. Um, and we'll be undertaking a small budget amendment over the next sort of, between now and Christmas. But the major amendment will be in the early new year, once we see the six month results. But yeah, certainly happy to bring back and talk through what those various scenarios might look like for what we anticipated when we brought the budget down in, in June versus what the actual results are showing us now.
I'll open for other questions, note this is not discussion yet, it's just, just questions.
Yep, sure.
Any other questions, the CFO? Thank you very much.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you councillor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councillors.
May I ask for a mover to this, to 15.1? Thank you, councillor Johnick. And a seconda, councillor Quinssman, thank you very much. Moving to discussion. I guess I'll have a question for you, CEO. We've now committed, I guess, as our first quarter. I get your opinion and your advice on how the council's tracking financially.
We are performing a little better, which is probably where you would want to be, just a little better. There are, you'll see, local government budgeting is comparatively stable. It's more dynamic now than it's ever been with the current environment, not exactly knowing what's happening. But generally, local government budgeting is a comparative stable thing and you run within very, very tight percentages. And we are running, I guess, as I would hope to see, which is slightly better than what occurs. And there will be several small, not small, but comparatively small movements which will affect your surplus or your deficit going forward. So I'm, I guess, slightly heartened by our current financial performance, which I think is consistent with perhaps where the state is going in terms of its performance, dealing with the pandemic and impacts on the economy of Queensland, haven't been as bad because the pandemic hasn't resulted in as as major damage to the economy as we may have anticipated.
Any other discussions or questions? Yes, councillor Quinssman.
Question from CEO. That's with no loss of services to residents this time?
No, there's been, certain things haven't been operating. For example, major performances at the Civic Centre. But that's actually cost us money, both provided some savings, but cost us more money and lost income. But no, what you would call core delivery services have been impacted in that space.
So how are you preparing the organisation for COVID and the different scenarios of if there's another wave and so on?
I guess, we've got two roles and responsibilities. One is as an employer of, you know, over 1,200 people. And then secondly, as the local authorities. So we've got a reasonably dynamic response to to the health situation with our employees. We have the ability to manage both our our staff who have to attend and perform work. And we have a setting that we move them to, to manage that, create separation, manage access to vehicles, et cetera, for those staff who still have to perform roles and responsibilities to service our community. And we also have an ability to move comparatively quickly now into a more significantly socially distanced environment for our office based staff. And we are constantly monitoring that. So leaders within the organisation are constantly working with their staff to determine the appropriate way that we can deliver services.
Any other questions or discussion points? In that case, I'll put item 15.1, the Monthly Finance Performance Report, to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to 15.2, which is the report of the Audit and Risk Management Committee, 2020 of '04, of 17th, of the 7th of October 2020, be received. The contents noted and the recommendations contained therein be adopted. May I please have a, actually, I'll just see here, there's a late report listed, a supplementary agenda. That's the next item, is it? 15.3? Any other clarification, CEO?
Sorry, we dealt with Audit and Risk Management?
No, we haven't, but I've got here that there was a late report.
Yeah, 15.3.
That's 15.3?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we go back to 15.2. May I have a mover, please? Thank you, councillor Doyle. And a seconda, thank you, councillor Johnick. Thank you very much. And they'll open the item up for debate, discussion.
Mayor, I would just like to take the opportunity, there were a number of items on the agenda with at Audit and Risk Committee. Just one matter I'd like to highlight, I guess, for the benefit of our residents following historical financial matters with regard to Ipswich City Council. So item three on the agenda related to the annual, the 2019, 2020 annual financial statements for the controlled entities. The controlled entities of Ipswich City Council being Ipswich City Properties Pty Ltd, Ipswich City Enterprises Pty Ltd, Ipswich City Enterprises Investments Pty Ltd. So the controlled entities identified in the report have been included due to the consolidation now within council's financial statements. The financial statements for each of the controlled entities have been prepared and developed with the support and supervision of council's finance branch under the watchful eye of Geoff Keats and our CEO, David Farmer. The financial statements are included in council's Audit and Risk Management Committee just for completeness, noting our chair does come from a very extensive accounting background. And to add further to that, the draft financial statements are those that are provided to the Queensland Audit Office. And I guess just a quick update with regard to Ipswich City Properties. Following a declaration of solvency in the 24th of March 2020, there was a resolution of the board to commence a member's voluntary liquidation for the purpose of wind up and deregistration. Liquidators were appointed on the 26th of March and that voluntary liquidation process is, remains ongoing. So just a quick update for residents who may have been following the financials of the various controlled entities.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Also, if I could ask, note on here as well, in item six, general business, to that in response to a question that the Queensland Audit Office advised that it was ready to commence an audit of Cherish the Environment Foundation. And is Queensland Audit Office's view that it's a controlled entity? However, Queensland Audit Office is awaiting agreement and advice from the board of the foundation. Are you or the CEO able to provide an update on?
I understand there's been agreement from the board for QIO to audit, perform the audit of Cherish the Environment.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, discussions? Thank you. I'll then put the 15.2, that the report of the Audit and Risk Management Committee be accepted. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We now move on to the late report, which is 15.3. May I ask for a mover, please? Councillor Ireland. Seconda, thank you councillor Quinssman. Before we go, this is a late item, so just if I could ask for another, a minute or two to read through it, please. I don't know if everyone else has read it.
Sorry, Mayor, just this is one that we discussed and need a little further information.
Yes, so I'm just going to read through it.
Okay.
It's a late item. Thank you for that. The recommendation here is that this came through from the Governance and Transparency Committee about property number 132 Eagle Street, Red Bank, applying for 100% concessional differential general rate, a concession, to be backdated from the 1st of April. And there was limited information about the organisation. I can see, based on page five of eight, that there's been some subsequent further due diligence there in regards to the activities on the 15th, 16th of October. Are there any questions anyone would like to ask the local council officer? Any discussion? No. In that case, I'll move that 15.3, having satisfied the criteria of section 120 of the Local Governments Act, the rates concession from the 1st of April will be backdated for 132 Eagle Street, Alhata Hata. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Item 16 is notices of motion. I don't have any. 17 is questions on notice. There are none. Before we close, just a reminder that 15 minutes after this meeting, so it's now not under 52, that myself, councillor Madison, councillor Ireland, Mr Tabula and Mr Bowles will be heading into a meeting with the residents of Sovereign Pocket to discuss their petition and the issues that they're having. Have there been no more?
Yes, I was 15.4 and 15.5 listed on the agenda, but there's no reports. We probably just need to
Oh, okay.
move that the matters not be considered.
Okay. Thank you, CEO. The CEO has pointed out that that was published, what day was that? Was 15.4 and 15.5 published?
Published when the agenda went out, which was last Thursday.
Thursday?
And
So 15, sorry.
And the reports were delivered under separate cover for two reasons, separate reasons those reports aren't coming forward to council. So while they're listed on the agenda, then the council needs to just resolve that the matters not be considered.
Okay. So I'll do each ones separately. Is it 15.4, the adoption of Ipswich City Council Annual Report 2019-2020? My understanding that's coming to us as a special meeting?
On the 5th.
On the 5th of November. Do I have someone who will move? Thank you, councillor Doyle. And a seconda, thank you councillor Quinssman. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item 15.15, it was a finalisation of negotiations. I'll have to wait till it comes up. I'll list negotiators for cinema operator in the Nicholas Street precinct. May I have a mover for this matter not to be considered today? Thank you, councillor Doyle. And a seconda, thank you, councillor Milligan. Discussion? No, in that case, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, for this not to be considered, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Are there any other matters, CEO? Thank you very much. I'll now close the meeting at 9:54. Thank you.